Unreserved, at the end of 2009, we had $11 million in the bank. Now, from there, I'm going to go to the PowerPoint that I sent everybody as part of their packet and get a little more macro, a little more big picture, because this starts to look at where we think we're going to be in 2010 and in 2011. The first slide is a summary of our sales tax, actual and projections. Now, this is the city's one cent share of the six cent sales tax that the state collects for us. It doesn't include our one cent city-only sales tax that's earmarked for capital projects. This is just the money that goes into our general fund. In 2007, we collected about $2.8 million, a little bit less in 2008, somewhat less in 2009, and that's a function of the economy. In the budget year that we're in right now, we projected $2.9 million, and we think best guess is it's going to be a little shy of $2.6 million. And the number that we're putting out there for next fiscal year as we start our budget preparation is about $2.7 million. If you phase that in over the course of five years, it's flat. It's not increasing, it's not decreasing a lot, but it's a whole lot better than some other cities that are more reliant upon the sales tax than we are. Now, how confident am I in that $2.7? Again, project that 18 months and tell me what the economy's going to look like. If Target closes its doors and walks away, you can throw that projection into a cocked hat. If we get, God willing, an auto dealership, you can also throw that into a cocked hat, because those are the kind of things that make those kind of revenue projections with respect to the sales tax so volatile and makes it so difficult to go out 18 months to see where we're going to be. Next one. Income tax. This is the amount of money that we collect as our share of-
Excuse me, there's a question, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Back to sales tax here. According to the way the documents that I've been seeing, our sales tax for this year has been pretty much, we didn't lose that much sales tax. Am I wrong?
We really haven't. You know, you look at 2007, 2008, and it's pretty flat. 2009 is down a couple hundred thousand dollars. 2010 is down a little bit more. We think it'll rebound a little bit to $2.7 million in 2011. I mean, overall, it's been pretty flat. And compared, like I said, compared to some other cities that's seen a significant decrease in sales tax receipts, ours have been pretty steady.
Pretty much even.
I think that's a function of a couple of things. Number one, and I never thought I'd say this before, but at this time in the economy, you're sort of glad that you don't have an auto dealership. Because some of those towns like Elmhurst and Schaumburg, who've been wedded to the sales tax that come from Auto Rose, have now seen that opiate disappear, and they're really on the skids. We don't have that. It's great in an upturn, it's not so great in a downturn. The other thing is, I think that people who normally would shop at Nordstrom, shop at Target. They've still got to buy their jeans, and they've still got to buy their staples, and, you know, Target's banging along. You go to Woodfield-
We call that Tarjay in Woodfield.
Tarjay, excuse me. And, you know, you see the upscale woodfields, and they're having a hard time. So I think that the essential components of our sales tax economy are those that are sort of resistant to the ups and downs of the economy.
Alderman Police?
Just a quick comment, Wally. On the projected for 2011, why go up to $2.7? Why not just stay at $2.5? So if we end up at $2.7, we're good, and we're not spending more than that.
Well, because we've taken a look at some of the monthly receipts over the last three, four months, and we see that the tide's starting to turn a little bit, and it's starting to increase a little bit. And again, I mean, you can throw a dart at that. You can pick 2.7, you can pick 2.6, you can pick 2.5, and it's all, you know, it's all guesswork. We base our numbers based upon, mostly upon past trends, in terms of where the numbers have been floating from month to month.
And we did build in a conservative number for the Thorntons that you passed last week as well, to add into that, with the allowance for the rebate that was also passed last week. So that accounts for part of that bump. If that wouldn't have been in there, that number would have been lower. You are correct.
Alderman Coles?
The way I look at this is, you probably took an average of them all together and then come out with a figure that's pretty close to what the average is. That's what I look at.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's not rocket science.
Okay, Mr. Manager, if you can continue.
Okay, if you go to the next one, which is the income tax. This number is really outside of our local control. This is a revenue that comes from the state based upon collection of statewide income tax, and a portion of that income tax is distributed back to the cities on a per capita basis. So you have more people, you get more of the state income tax. You have less, you get less. Schaumburg gets a lot more, is their share than we do. It has nothing to do with the local economy, it has everything to do with the state economy. And the numbers have been a little bit higher over the last several years. Over the course of five years, again, it's a flat line. A million one in '07, a million two in 2008, 2009. We estimated a million 350 this year. We think it's going to be a million 285. And based upon the IML estimates that we've seen, we've scaled that back down to a million one for 2011. Again, I mean, we take the numbers that IML gives us, and we extrapolate them to our city in terms of pro-capita dollars, and that's where the million one came from. Economy picks up, that number picks up. Next one is telecommunications tax. This is the money that you pay as part of your phone bill, your internet bill, your Comcast bill, and that kind of thing. And this has shown some health. A million three in '07, a little more in '08. We budgeted almost a million five in '09. We were conservative, we budgeted about a million four this year. We think it'll be closer to a million 450, and we think in '11 it'll be a million 480. Again, based upon trends. But those are the three major sources of revenue in the general fund that really rise and fall with the economy. The other ones, which I haven't put in, but you've heard about before, are property tax, which is this year plus 5%. Court fines, which Chief Benowitz has been very aggressive in collecting, and building receipts, which are down with the economy. And those, again, are really sort of outside of our control. And then the next one, Brad, is a summary over the years of our revenues and expenditures in the general fund. In 2007, we ran about a million dollar surplus, revenues over expenditures. In 2008, we ran about a $340,000 surplus. In 2009, again, because of that one-time IPBC infusion of cash, we saw almost a $2 million surplus. Our 2010 budget, which we gave to you last spring, called for about a $200,000 surplus. Based upon our best estimates right now, it's going to be closer to a $500,000 deficit, about, excuse me, about a $400,000 deficit. And best guess right now, based upon labor costs that we can forecast and the revenues that we can forecast, we think we're going to look at 2011 with a $400,000 deficit. And that may seem like a lot. $400,000 is a lot, but I think you need to put that in perspective with respect to the next slide that we're going to show you. And this is our fund balance. Now, you recall that back early this spring, the council passed a policy statement that said, "We want our general fund revenue balance, our fund balance, to be a minimum of 50% of annual expenditures." We want to keep enough money in the bank to handle cash flow issues, downturn in the economy, other projects we hadn't foreseen that we might want to spend money on, and we want to set that bar at a minimum of 50% of annual expenditures. In 2007, our balance was about $9 million, 85% of expenditures. In 2008, it was a shade over $9 million, 76% of expenditures. In '09, it was $11 million, 103%. Budget in '10, nine and a half million. We estimate it'll be 10.6. And best guess for 2011, we think it'll be about $10 million, which is still 81% of our general fund expenditures. So we can absorb that $400,000 downtick in '11 in terms of a small deficit through the cushion that we've built up over the years. And that means that we're not going to have to look at layoffs, we're not going to have to look at furlough days, you know, we're not going to have to look at attrition, although there's not much attrition, because people tend to keep their jobs around here. We're in a situation where we can ride out this short-term storm, and we've got the cushion in terms of cash in the bank to be able to handle that. Be able to handle that. I'm not fired up about a $400,000 deficit next year. We don't know what it'll be. These are just our best guesses, projecting out for 18 months. But even if our best guesses hold true, we've still got the kind of cushion that allow us to handle that on a year-to-year basis. So I think we're pretty healthy, and we're certainly in better shape than some of our other cities around us. And then two more, and then I'll stop and answer any other questions you might have.
And I'm just going to interject, though. I realize that we don't have to hit the panic button, but I want us to be cognizant that this is coming up, and that we do have to look at, how can we control some of the spending? Thank you.
And again, 70% to 75% of our general fund expenditures are in personal services, salaries and benefits. 80% of our workforce is unionized. You know, so that leaves electricity, gasoline, you know, tires, paper clips, you know, all of which rolled into one big lump sum may appear to be a whole lot, but you've got to pay, you know, pay electricity, you've got to buy paper clips. So there's not a whole lot we can do with respect to wild and crazy ideas to get those numbers down, unless you want to take a hard run at labor contracts. We're in the middle of negotiations now with our local 150. Our telecommunications operators' contract expires in April of next year, and we're going to start negotiations with that. And our police contract expires in 2011, and those numbers are pretty well locked in. So barring anything, you know, outside the box, we're a little bit limited in terms of what we might be able to do. But again, we're going to keep an eye on those other expenditures and keep them under control as best we can. And then two more, and I'll sit down. And this is just two quick ones with respect to our water and our sewer fund. This is the other major operating fund we have, aside from the general fund. Most of the revenues come from the sale of water and sewer charges. Most of the expenditures come from the purchase of water from DuPage Water Commission. '07, about a million dollar surplus, about a million and a half surplus in '08, about a million two surplus in '09. We budgeted about $100,000 surplus in this year. We think it's going to be closer to $300,000. And because of some other projects coming onboard in '11, it's looking to be closer to $1 million in a deficit short term for 2011. But again, as the next slide shows, our net assets, read cash balance, are still pretty healthy. At the end of 2011, we'll still have 102% of annual expenditures in the bank, well over the amount that we need to cushion any potential downturn.
Does that conclude your summary?
That concludes the ones I've got, and we'll answer any questions you've got.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I have one question on the water and sewer fund revenue. Why are you predicting $1 million, almost $1 million in expenditure? I thought we, as a council, I thought when we debated about the water bill issues that we raised the water bill, I thought this fund was going to be pretty much up to snog by year 2011 when we did that. Why are we, I mean, to me, the presentation is that we still aren't up to funding that the way it should be funded.
And we are. But part of the water and sewer expenditures include capital improvements for water and sewer projects. And the Public Works Director has already identified a potential capital project in 2011, a new generator for the south plant that's anticipated to cost $1 million. And that wasn't in the five-year CIP that you saw last year. He said, "I'm going to need a new generator." We haven't made a decision on that, but anticipating that that might get folded into the capital improvements program for '11, that's why you see that million-dollar uptick in '11, is because of the unanticipated capital outlay that Mr. Kramer has identified, and we've plugged it in for now, just in terms of projections. If that goes away, we're back to a balanced revenue expenditure stream.
Let me do a follow-up. May I? The question I have here, then, you're saying that he put in for new, he may put in for a new generator for next fiscal year for one of the buildings. Why would that come out of this fund? Why would that not come out of CIP, a capital project?
It's part of the, it's part of the, it's the water and sewer component of the capital projects. But that, the capital projects are built into the water and sewer fund revenue expenditure projections. It's a combination of operations and capital.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a word of warning. I had breakfast with one of the DuPage Water Commissioners on Wednesday, and he advised me that there may be a spike in our costs on acquiring water from the Water Commission. So we may have that, unfortunately, to look forward to.
Any other questions, comments? Alderman Police?
Wally, this generator for the treatment plant, we got the study coming up in a couple of weeks, don't we? We're going to get all the options, and so we'll be able to make decisions.
Yes, we will. All of the alternatives given to us so far indicate improvements to the north plant and none to the south plant. But again, that's going to be dependent upon the sewer study that we do, the master plan. Again, it's a number out there as a placeholder, just to let you know it might be coming. It might not be necessary. We might decide we can do without it for a couple of years. You know, like I said, when you start to look at 2011 projections, and you haven't even started the budget for the 2011 budget yet, you know, these numbers are all hazy. So I don't want you to get hung up by saying, you know, "By God, you told us 2011 was going to be a million-dollar deficit," and all of a sudden it turns out to be $500,000 or $700,000 or a small surplus. Again, I'm, we're taking numbers that are 18 months out and trying to make the best guess that we can.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Wilson, does that conclude this item?
Yes, it does, Chairman Weyer.
Okay. And do you need an affirmative vote on this, for informational only? Okay, thank you. Next item is item number six, discussion on potential contract renewal with Allied Waste Services. Mr. Wilson?
Actually, I believe, if not mistaken, Manager Douthat was going to take that one.
What? Excuse me, excuse me, I have to, I have to be, I have to leave because I have problems with I like. But until they're over, I can't, I can't vote for him.
Yeah.
As stated, the franchise that we have with Allied expires in April of 2010. It's a five-year franchise that was entered into in 2005, and expires this April. The contract calls for the city to make a determination to either cancel that franchise in April, or to elect to extend the franchise for a period of time that the council feels appropriate, as long as we give the company four months' notice. And that four months' notice is at the end of December. Now, since I've been here, the two variables that I look at with respect to a franchise solid waste hauler is level of service and competitive pricing. And we get relatively few complaints or concerns from our residents with respect to Allied's service delivery. Those complaints that we do get, we contact their field rep, and those issues are generally resolved the same business day. So overall, I would say that their level of service to the community has been pretty good. The other-
Can I interrupt you for me? We have Allied Waste, or we have BFI, or do they merge?
As the memo indicated in the first paragraph, BFI was bought out by Allied, and they assumed that contract midway through. Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Which of you gentlemen is Vander Mullen? There used to be a waste company called Vander Mullen. Are you related to the family?
Yes. My father is a contractor.
Paul?
Paul is my father's contractor.
Okay. Then I have to reclose myself. I do business with the Vander Mullens.
Okay, and I'm going to take control back of the meeting. Let's wait to be recognized. Okay. So, Mr. Manager, why don't you go ahead and-
The other, the other component we take a look at is price, that the hauler charges us, and then we charge the citizens. And although we're waiting on a more comprehensive review of those prices from DMMC, that ought to be out in the next week or two, Brad Wilson has contacted a few of the communities around us, and I think those numbers are listed in the memo, and Allied's prices with respect to what they charge the neighboring communities are fairly competitive. So then the question becomes, do we want to bid this back out next year and look to find another hauler? Or do we determine that we're satisfied with the level of service and the competitive rates, and elect to extend the contract for as many years as you're comfortable with? My experience has been that if you change haulers, that there are some dislocations and some hiccups along the way that result in changing from one hauler to another. The dates or the days of pickups may be different. The method of collection in terms of toters versus 30-gallon cans, how they handle recycling may be different. The field reps are new and may take some time to get acclimated to the community, and those kind of dislocations take with them some level of uncertainty and a few bumps along the line. Given the fact that the level of service appears to be good, the prices appear to be competitive, I believe that it's in the city's interest to sign some sort of a letter of intent with Allied to extend the franchise by a predetermined amount of time. And I've spoken to these gentlemen and talked to them about the idea of entering into a conceptual letter of intent to extend the franchise, that letter to be sent out before the end of the year. And then the staff can get together with the representatives of the haulers and work out the details of the contract to be presented back to the city council later next spring. And if, for some reason, negotiations break down, we can continue the relationship on a month-by-month basis and go out and go through the full-blown bidding process if we choose to do that. But I think the areas of negotiation may be relatively minor. We would, we, the city, would be interested in discussing with these folks the method by which they bill us. Right now, they bill us based upon a predetermined number of accounts or houses, and that number doesn't fluctuate if there are a bunch of foreclosures. We still pay them the same amount, whether we have more or fewer customers that we bill out directly, and we've indicated a desire to talk about maybe changing that a little bit. We'd like to explore the idea of expanding the use of our toters for recyclables without impacting the residents who've already bought toters in the past. And that may be a little bit dicey, but they've indicated a willingness to talk about that. On their behalf, they've indicated some interest in getting some clauses that would protect them if gasoline prices raise significantly, or if dumping fees rise considerably over and above what's expected. They'd like some protection against that, and I think those are reasonable requests. So my recommendation tonight is that the council affirm that we're interested in an extension of the existing franchise agreement with Allied, and then turn the staff loose on the actual negotiations, and let us bring something back to you in more detail in the next three months or so. And I will answer any questions you have, and I'm sure these folks can answer any questions as you might have with them.
If we do talk through the gasoline cost protection, that I would certainly expect that within that discussion, the, if the price of gasoline drops, so will the rate, because I've seen it in other carriers done where that rate doesn't come back down.
Our typical practice is, we don't want the bills adjusting each and every month. We'd rather give ourselves a variable. So let's say fuel today is probably about $2.70. We would not ask for a fuel to kick in until it hit like $3.70. Typically, it's a dollar swing either way at that point. That's the only time we would come in for a fuel adjustment. We don't want to come in asking for a fuel adjustment. It's only in the extreme. That's what we're looking for, just for protection.
Okay.
Do we have a problem with what you said?
Not at all.
In terms of to make it equitable?
Sure, sure.
That's a fine idea.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Police?
Yeah, a couple of things. I thought when we do something this big, it has to go out to bid, you know, got to have, it's not professional services where, you know, we hire an engineer.
It doesn't have to go out to bid. If you look at pages 16 and 17 of the contract that I furnished to you, both on pages 16 and 17, it talks about the ability to extend the contract by mutual consent. And I've spoken to the attorneys about this, and they said, "You're covered on that. You can extend for a one-year period of time, you can extend for a four-year period of time." It's really up to you.
Any other, Alderman Ray Wesley? No, go ahead, Ray, and then I'll come back to you.
For our recyclables, I'm sure the company gets some money for the recyclables, for turning them into, for funds. The prices that you gave here, Wally, from Addison, Benzville, do they get money back from the garbage company whatsoever for the recyclables, and do they recycle?
Yes, they recycle. Whether they get anything back from the company, I don't know.
I can answer that. In regard to Addison and some of the neighboring communities, and any community we haul, none do. There's a lot of fluctuation. Currently, the value of the material covers our costs to get it from the truck to the processing plant. Last fall, we were paying almost as much to get the processing plant to accept the recyclables as it would have cost us to take it to the landfill. In other words, in the high $40 a ton. So there's a lot of fluctuation. There are times that it does have a strong positive value, and there are times, like last fall, that it's got a strong negative value. And for the most part, for the last 10 years, they're having-